I'd like to call to order the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners workshop meeting for Wednesday, October fifteenth. We'll begin with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Begin with a review of the minutes. Are there any questions about the minutes before us? Well, for us for review for next week. Hearing none, executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Haggerty.
On Tuesday, October fourteenth, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding the purchase or lease of real property, active or pending litigation, fleet management, and personnel matters.
Any questions of Mr. Haggerty? Hearing none, we'll move on to public participation on agenda items only. We have five agenda items today in our matters requiring board action. Anything on the agenda that you would like to make public participation on or make public comment on, you have a three-minute time cap and you'll need to state your name prior to, and we are being live streamed. Anyone who would like to make a public comment?
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I see six items.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies.
For board action.
Anyone for public comment? Seeing none. Directors and guests, salary report, Cassie Roschinsky.
Morning, Cassie.
Morning.
Morning.
Today, I'm just asking for a vote on items twelve and sixty-four of the personnel packet. Salary board, we'll just do next week.
Do I have a motion for items twelve and sixty-four in the personnel packet?
Just a quick question. Why do we need to take action on these two?
Item twelve, the vacancy needs to be posted so they can hire for the position, and the other one is just a lateral change that the date has already passed. It was ten thirteen.
Yep, I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Hartwick. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion?
Are these within the allocated twenty twenty-five budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. For item A before us, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion?
This item will be within the allocated twenty twenty-five past budget.
Okay.
It's a decrease in pay, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Director of Budget and Finance, Mr. Davis.
Morning.
Morning.
I have no changes to the PO report. I will get the board the remaining budget figures here by the end of the day today. I'm working on some kind of export to pull those out for you.
Great. Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Davis?
Yeah, how are we looking at Dolphin County prison with the overall budget for twenty twenty-five? Any areas of concern that this board needs to be aware of?
Say not outside the usual. They are projected to be over, you know, sure they're over overtime. There's projections for the end of the year, the increased cost of medical contract we'll have for a quarter. Just overall staffing challenges that continue to persist.
The overall prison budget will be under budget as of now.
It's well, it's under as of right now. It's projected to be over budget at the end of the year.
Could you please provide us at the next meeting the projected number that will be over budget?
Mm-hmm. Certainly.
I've heard nothing from anyone till now that we're potentially over budget in Dolphin County prison.
Yep, I can get that together for you.
And just to the other side of that, I know that their projected budget that they submitted was sixty-seven million, which is a significantly larger number than was proposed last year. I think it was fifty-nine million, so.
You're referring to next year's projected budget.
Correct. And this year, for those, the overtime costs and salary costs, at least projected, have been significantly over in our review.
Any other questions of Mr. Davis?
I just want to thank Commissioner Hartwick since he's taken over as oversight of the budget in May. He's done a great job going through every department and the budget and sharing concerns behind the scenes with the board, which are unflattering numbers to say the least.
Anything else for Mr. Davis? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Haggerty.
Good morning, commissioners. There are a handful of items on the agenda today for your consideration. We have two prison agreements, an agreement relating to the annual Great American Outdoor Show, a resolution ratifying the execution of opioid settlement participation forms, one PCCD grant agreement, the city of Harrisburg, and one facility maintenance agreement to begin repairs on elevators in the courthouse. As Commissioner Priest and Commissioner Hartwick just alluded to, hard decisions around the budget are going to be forthcoming. On the screen here is our current projection for our estimates for our end-of-the-year budget in twenty twenty-five, as well as requests we received for twenty twenty-six, and then projections based off those numbers for twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-eight. So I appreciate this opportunity to provide an update for the board about the county's financial position, given that we will soon be faced with many hard decisions about next year's budget. As alluded to, over the previous couple months, we have convened individual meetings with each of the county's departments to review their revenue and expenses to date this year, as well as their budget requests for next year. Unfortunately, I'm not here today with good news. The county continues to maintain a significant structural budget deficit. The budget adopted in twenty twenty-three led to a twenty-one million dollar deficit in twenty twenty-four, and the budget adopted in twenty twenty-four, despite a significant tax increase, has still resulted in a projected fifteen point six million dollar deficit for twenty twenty-five. We anticipate ending twenty twenty-five with less than fourteen million dollars left in the general fund. If our current level of expenditures remained the same next year, we would face a twenty-two million dollar deficit and the county would be insolvent by mid-year. Of course, we know that holding expenses flat is unrealistic, given the significant increase in costs, as just referenced, related to the Dolphin County prison, healthcare services contract, as well as whatever increases result from collective bargaining. In addition, county departments have requested a net nine million dollars in increased spending next year, which, if agreed to, would result in a staggering thirty-one point four million dollar deficit for twenty twenty-six, twice the amount remaining in our general fund balance. It is therefore clear that our current operation is unsustainable, and there will be many hard decisions to be made over the next two months. I'm going to lay out some extreme scenarios just to illustrate how challenging the county's financial position is if we change nothing about the way we do business. These are going to be some hard numbers to hear, but they are important to know as we make a variety of hard decisions throughout the remainder of the year. On one end of the spectrum, if the board chose to resolve this financial situation by raising taxes without cutting expenses, an additional twenty-four percent tax increase would be necessary to balance next year's budget. On the flip side, if the board chose to tackle the problem by reducing payroll without increasing revenue, we would need to eliminate three hundred and forty positions in order to balance the budget next year. Again, I know these are hard numbers to hear. I'm confident nobody wants to have to take either of these courses of action, but it is my responsibility to share the facts of the situation. To try to prevent either of these worst-case scenarios, we've therefore been exploring a variety of alternative options for the board's consideration that we hope might soften the blow of some of these hard decisions. To start, department heads are actively reviewing the budget requests they already submitted and are looking at ways to operate more efficiently. We had a very candid directors' meeting this past Friday, and I sincerely appreciate their commitment to being part of the solution. In terms of additional revenue, we do have two remaining one-time opportunities to transfer money to the general fund. We have fifteen million dollars in unrestricted gaming funding and eight point six million dollars in remaining ARPA funds. The county could also consider a lease-leaseback of the administration building here, which could provide a one-time infusion of twenty-five to thirty million dollars at the cost of increased debt service payments in future years. We could also defer three point four million dollars in debt service payments next year through refinancing and debt restructuring. There may ultimately need to be hard decisions about services we currently offer to residents that, despite being a lifeline to many people, may not be legally required for us to provide. There's no sugarcoating how challenging the county's financial position is. While we have a handful of options at our disposal that may buy us some time, we need to seriously identify ways to bring our recurring revenue and expenses into alignment. In early November, we will begin having more formal discussions about next year's budget, but I thought it was important to share this preview in advance of the board receiving budget books in a couple weeks. In the meantime, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Haggerty. Any questions of Mr. Haggerty? Is that the end of your chief clerk's report? Thank you. Solicitor's report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. All items requiring board action have been reviewed and approved by the solicitor's office, except number two, and I'm going to recommend that the board table that.
You're asking for that action.
That's fine, yes.
And just to be clear, table for review.
Correct.
Any questions of Mr. Owens?
No, I just, I mean, again, these, this issue is one that I would love some discussion in our executive session. There are many paths to resolution, and I want to be clear, support moving forward. These proposals to continue the operation of the show, but there, without addressing liability concern, I don't know how things get to the agenda in that way. They should. Okay. I was sitting back a little bit and I was told that I could not be heard in my comments. What I asked was, these things should have been resolved in executive session yesterday, or this should not have appeared on the agenda today. The one thing I don't want to do is politicize issues. I want to address the concerns that exist, that are legitimate to protect county taxpayers, but not to turn issues into a political football. And I think in this case, this could have been addressed by removing this or not having it appear. We're in a workshop, five months away from this event happening. There should have been no reason that this has, these issues are not resolved prior to it appearing on the agenda. But that being said, I will motion to table this particular item today to be able to bring up once the issues of underlying liability concern have been resolved.
We have a motion. Is there a second? I will second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Haggerty, who requested item number two, agreement between Dolphin County and National Rifle Association of America to provide security services at the twenty twenty-six Great American Outdoor Show, February one to February ninth, hourly rates varying for thirty, fifty dollars an hour? Who requested that be placed on the agenda for this week?
I believe the National Rifle Association is the origination of this request.
Okay. This is, as I've said many times, not only the largest outdoor show in Pennsylvania, not only the largest outdoor show in the country, it's the largest outdoor show in the world, with an eighty-one million dollar annual economic impact, over eight thousand jobs that are brought here during the show, and close to three million dollars in tax revenue to Dolphin County and the city of Harrisburg. Mr. Hartwick, you said you don't want this to become a political issue, but by placing it on the agenda without us discussing it, had to be known that this was going to be an issue of some way, shape, or form. If there were any questions involving this, by the time this was brought to our attention, between Friday, I believe, and this morning, if someone had questions about it, unless something just came up at the last minute, which I find very hard to believe this board, it should have been brought up and discussed, as Commissioner Hartwick mentioned, so that's my statement. It's item number two.
Mr. Owens, can I ask a question? Is the purpose for tabling this is legitimately a contractual concern, correct?
Correct.
And the contractual concern is liability?
Among others.
Among others. Okay. And so this isn't a political thing. This is a thing of the concern for exposure to the county.
As solicitor, I'm apolitical, so I can't, I can't really comment on if it's political or not.
But what I'm saying is, your determination for tape, for giving us the advice of tabling it is for the express purpose of potential liability to the county.
Legal. It's a legal reason.
Okay, okay.
Is there a reason this wasn't brought up prior till this morning?
I have to review that in my office. I honestly was surprised this was on the agenda.
I find that hard to believe as well. Not stating it at your direction, just find that hard to believe.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of tabling item two?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. We have a training pack. Is there anything else for your solicitor's report? Sorry, Mr. Owens.
Nothing further.
Any questions of Mr. Owens? Hearing none. Training packet. Do I have a motion for approval of the training packet? Moved by Commissioner Hartwick. Do I have a second? I'll second the training packet. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Matters requiring board action. We have items one, three, four, five, and six before us for approval. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Moved by Commissioner Priest for items one, three, four, five, and six. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Former business, new business, commissioners' comments, Commissioner Hartwick?
I've got nothing today.
You have nothing? All right. Commissioner Priest?
I had the opportunity to attend the annual APA Planners Convention that was hosted here in Dolphin County. First event was at the Whittaker Center, and then the actual convention was at the Hilton, over four hundred and fifty individuals from around the state, right here in Dolphin County, right here in the city of Harrisburg. So we appreciate them coming here and spending their time at this beautiful city and its beautiful county.
Thank you, Commissioner Priest. I had the opportunity to attend Breaking the Cycle Breakfast for the Nativity School. It was very inspirational. Many students shared, just a great time. LeVar Arrington was there as well. It was great to meet him. LeVar Arrington was there as well. It was great to meet him. I also went to the World Affairs Council. Young Asian diplomats were in town for that, coming from Vietnam, Nepal, the Philippines, Indonesia, Thailand, Mongolia, Cambodia, Sri Lanka, Timor, Leste, and Fiji. Visit Hershey-Harrisburg, did a great job of welcoming them and showing our region to them. Obviously, the Capitol, I think they had a day in Midtown and a day in Hershey as well. They were all around. And oddly enough, Fiji expressed interest in a sister-region arrangement. And I said, I will take that back to the Commissioner. So I don't know if you want, we could maybe talk about a sister arrangement with Fiji. Chalktoberfest in Hershey was a great event this past week, thanks to all those who planned it. Lots of people were there. I also attended the NAACP Greater Harrisburg Freedom Dinner. It was great to celebrate the resilience and commitment to justice within our community. I was also at the Latino Ball, had the great opportunity to spotlight Argentina. That's the country that they were spotlighting this year. And I had the chance to sit with multiple Dauphin County employees, and we may or may not have got on the dance floor. Hopefully, there's no footage. Conawago Township, I just want to give a quick shout-out to Conawago Township. They have a great park there called the Danny Fisher Memorial Park. If you've never been, you should check it out. My son turned 11 on Sunday, and we rented a pavilion there and had his whole fifth-grade class out to have fun in the park. And I just want to give a shout-out to their Parks and Recreation Department and their supervisors. It's an amazing park there, and it was great to celebrate there this past weekend. Correspondence will be received by the Chief Clerk's Office and disseminated as appropriate. We'll move on to public participation. I believe I have a sheet coming to me. Just a reminder, it's a three-minute time cap for public participation. You need to say your name at the beginning of your statement, and we are being livestreamed. Dr. Charles E. Stewart.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. You can come grab a seat.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioner, there's a reason I'm here today as an old issue.
Excuse me, could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Charles E. Stewart. I am CEO and Chairman of the Board for the Harrisburg Area Police Athletic League. Every year, we have to fight. Been getting money from this gaming grant. And we've been getting gaming grant money since 2013. No issues at all. Last year, they kicked our application out because they say we didn't serve the county. Been serving the county since 2012. Let it go and had some assistance in resolving some of those issues. This year, they kicked our application out because they say we delivered it to the wrong address. You know, I'm starting to get the feeling that there's either somebody don't like us, or somebody don't like the place, or there's something going on. It's just not, it's just not right. As far as delivering it to the wrong address. I had been in the hospital, I had a stroke, we had some medical issues. We had written, I'd written a grant, finished it about three, about a week before, I even dropped it off at the office for the community development. Signage is there, signage is out front, the bucket's there where we drop off everything. And I didn't, I didn't get an email about two days ago telling me they had rejected our bid, our attempted doing this. This is old. I mean, we service over 200 youth here in this area. About 80% of them come from Harrisburg City. We deal with the kids that nobody wants to deal with. We deal with the parents that nobody wants to deal with, and we're happy to do so, and we enjoy that. We are eight, nine baseball teams. Last year, we're looking to increase that to about 12 baseball teams because Moself in the city has no baseball anymore. So we've gotten all of their youth, and I'm not turning any kids away. I don't care. We put our own money in it. I don't mind sharing. I make $20,000 a year off of this. So it's not money. My assistant, James Jones, he makes $15,000 a year off of it. And the only person that makes the most money is our administrative, and that's $40,000 a year. We only got three staff. We did, fortunate enough, please, I'm probably going to run out of my time. We work hard. We got property. We finally got our own property. We're working, we put everything in our infrastructure and are into our kids. We have 45, 50 kids that come in for basketball, from the ages of five to 12. But like I said, we got nine baseball teams. We could have had 10 last year due to funding. But the problem is, we follow the rules, and we still get kicked out. Today, Jimmy Jones is here as part of our crew. My executive administrative director is here, and I have a parent that wanted to come in and speak on this subject. It's just not fair. I'm not asking for you to give me money. I'm asking for an opportunity to get my application to be seen. I can't get past that. And that's absolutely ridiculous on the reasons why they're saying this. And then when I talk to them, it's like nothing. So I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to take this sitting down. I'm not that kind of guy when it comes to servicing our kids. I will bust my butt for them. I will take, we've taken money out of my own pocket. And if this has to, if I have to go deeper into this situation, then I will. It shouldn't be a need for that. That's all I have to say. It's kind of frustrating, and it...
Excuse me, sir. The three minutes has expired.
Okay. And it really pissed me off. Thanks.
Understood, Dr. Stewart. I know last year, you dealt with a similar situation, and I believe we worked to find a resolution. I need to review the circumstances of this one. So I'll reach out to Economic Development today and try to get an understanding of what exactly is taking place from their perspective, so that we can try to see if there's a resolution.
Please do. Thank you.
I believe it's Joanna Parish, or...
Hi, I'm Jatana Parish.
Parish, sorry, sorry.
That's okay. I am a mother, also a coach for Harrisburg Area Police Athletic League. We do baseball and basketball. My son's trying to do soccer. However, as a mom, I can only be spread so thin. But with PAL, we're able to accommodate all of the schedules. My two-year-old is actually growing up on the field, and he's trying to be one of the big kids, just like his big brother. And actually, the baseball team showed up for my two-year-old's birthday party. It wasn't, it's not just for those kids. It's also the siblings. The parents are getting together and helping to celebrate the kids, helping to celebrate in each season. My son has grown up so much. You can see their growth from one season to the next season, not just with their skills, but also their sportsmanship, follow-through, listening. He has an issue with attention, but he has followed through and been able to focus better at school and at home, as well as on the field. He has been able to meet his friends. He has been working with two of the kids that he went to preschool together at the age of three. They're all seven. They have built this lifelong, lifelong bond, and none of this would be possible without PAL. So we're just trying to help get these kids somewhere safe to play and not on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jatana. Next up is Ann Stewart.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ann Stewart. So I have been working with PAL full-time for about two, two and a half years. We have made a lot of progress with getting the property and getting things safe for the kids. So it's been great to see a lot of the families, especially the families that are coming from within the city, come out to our property, which is out in Lower Paxton Township. During our practices, the families stay. We have picnic tables. They interact with each other. Also, it's nice that we have a lot of support from other organizations. So we actually have been recently informed that we're the new Nike RBI affiliate for the area. So that's something new. That used to be taken over by Moself, and since they have dissolved, we have been approved for that. We also just were informed that we were chosen for the home field makeover from the Senators. So they'll be doing that project for us this year, actually, within the next couple of weeks. So they're going to come out to our field and do the project. So we feel like we have a lot of support, but the support from the county is what we feel like we really deserve and need. And just like my husband said, when we went to go drop off the application, it was in a timely manner. And when we went to the facility where we normally drop it off, all of the signs were still there. So we really did not know that they had moved because even upstairs, when you go upstairs, the elevator, the signs were on the door, the buckets were there. It's everything that it normally was. There was no big sign saying, hey, we're not here anymore, or else we obviously would have gotten back in the car, driven down the street, and dropped it off to a different location. So that's just the one thing that's been a little bit frustrating because we're getting, we get donations of sports equipment. Like, everything is falling into place, and this money is really needed to keep our programs going.
So just for clarity, because I didn't understand, you dropped it off at the Front Street, former location, where we used to have our Economic Development offices, and since moved to the county facility that we're in right now?
Yes.
Okay. I did not understand that specifically. Okay.
Yeah, we took it to the...
That's helpful information. Thank you.
And I believe that, just for clarification, I believe that there was something within the new correspondence that stated there was a new location to drop it off. However, if the old location still set up everything there, I can understand why there would be confusion if you showed up there and maybe didn't read the whole letter, or just assumed you were doing what you did prior. So I appreciate you bringing up the fact that you went there, the signage is still there, the drop-off box is still there, signage by the elevator is still there.
Right. Everything was still the same.
That's good information. But our staff at DCED does a remarkable job with this, a very small staff. They spend countless hours working with them. We have a new gaming board that we appointed this year into five-member board, so we'll be sharing some information.
Okay, thank you.
And you did it on time, right?
Yes.
You did it prior to...
Yes, we did. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, I have Edith, I believe, Cone. Oh, okay, you signed the wrong sheet. If you don't have a public comment, that's fine, but if you do, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, yeah. I wear numerous hats. Hi. I am a mentor for the PAL Police Athletic League.
Excuse me, ma'am. Could you please state your name for the record?
Edith Cook, I'm sorry.
Good to see you, Edith.
Good to see you too. I do mentoring for the PAL. We used to be located on Sixth Street. They moved their location. Also, we have a youth conference that the kids participate at with youth kids, and I'm one of the people who take them to this conference. And believe it or not, when you take children from the city that's not thinking about college, and they go to an area and they see numerous kids who are motivated, highly excited about going to college, and they change their mindset, I say the money's needed. These kids that I've had the privilege of taking wasn't thinking about those, they wasn't having that kind of conversation. But today, because of the PAL program, being exposed to these type of conferences, I've seen a change in them. So I don't want to kick you, but thank you.
Thank you. That is the extent of our signup sheet. Is there anyone in the room who would like to make public comment? Come on up.
Morning, Mrs. Dunn.
Good morning. James Jones. And basically, I've made my life's career of working in the nonprofit sector, working with youth in the area of Harrisburg and surrounding areas. So it's a real passion of mine. It's basically my life's work. And I've been working with PAL in various capacities over the last 12 years, as a consultant, as a volunteer, as a coach. And the only reason really that I came here was to support. One of the things that I do is I try to commit to trying to do the right thing. And in my consulting practices, my consulting manner is always try to look at the facts and then try to do the right thing. And it just sounds like that over the last couple of years, in trying to do the right thing and submitting the applications in a timely manner, trying to make sure that those who are going to be reviewing the information have everything that they need, so there's pretty much self-explanatory, eliminate all kinds of questions that cause confusion and cause waste of time and those kinds of things. So when Dr. Charles mentioned to me again that we were running into a similar problem this year where it just didn't appear to make sense, it didn't appear to be trying to do the right thing, I certainly told him that I'm glad to come down. And speaking in support of the agency, the things that we've been trying to do as the tenor of the meeting with difficulties in meeting budgets and the tough decisions that were mentioned, we all know that we're in that frame of mind right now. So I don't think any of us are really trying to waste each other's time. I don't think any of us are really trying to put bogus numbers together. We always take a good look at what do we really need, and then we try to submit for that. So whatever the problem might be, I would just ask the Commission to take a look at what's going wrong, what's not right, and let's just all try to do the right thing. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners. Pamela Parsons, City of Harrisburg. What I heard this morning about the budget was really chilling. Not really the amount of deficit that we're talking about, because I think that was kind of expected. But what disturbed me the most was using the prison budget, the prison medical contract, as the reason for the deficit. And what was even worse was then using county employee jobs as a budget to bash the deficit and the prison contract, the medical contract. And against that, the backdrop of paying the NRA security at $30 to $50 an hour, especially when I balance that against even the salary that was here today for a full-time maintenance worker, $16 an hour. And we don't even pay most of our library employees that amount of money. So let me remind you that we didn't get to this budget deficit this year in 2025. It was coming for a long time. And all of this is against a backdrop of no-bid contracts, corruption. I'm talking about from HRG and bridges to employee benefits, to prime care, to even the solar farm, which is still sitting around waiting for that sale to be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons. Anyone else?
Mr. Connolly, if you don't mind, I have a question first. The, just for clarification, the amount that's listed there, $30 to $50, could you explain what that means in terms of how it's listed here? I want to make sure that's being communicated correctly to the public.
Thank you, Commissioner Priest. For clarification, those rates are paid by the NRA, not by Dauphin County.
Tom Connolly, 345 North Harrisburg Street, Swatara Township. Didn't know I'd be speaking in support of the PAL, but I am definitely speaking in support of the PAL. I have a 50-year history with that organization. When it was on Third Street in Harrisburg, as a young boy, I had the opportunity to go there, get off the street. I grew up in 21st and Market, still my family home. It was an absolute treasure then, and the work that Dr. Stewart and his team, Jimmy Jones, do is incredible. Swatara Township worked with the PAL about two to three weekends ago, doing a chicken barbecue to raise funds. I don't even think that they should be coming here about this issue. The gaming grants, for anybody that did it before, you knew where you took it. Commissioner Priest is right. Way down in the 20-page instructions, it did have the new address. I went to the wrong address. I went to the wrong address with a grant. When I got there, there was a line of other people there. It was only a few minutes to come down here to the new address, but if it was taken to the other building and dropped off ahead of the deadline, how hard is that? I've come here before about people who haven't filed campaign finance reports, that works the law, and we heard from the Director of Elections, they filed it at the wrong place. And as a courtesy, a week or 10 days later, they filed it here with no fines, no penalties, nothing. The PAL should be funded through public safety money in this county, they are regional, they shouldn't have to get in the same pool as the gaming grants. Their kids are your kids. They're basically providing a public program that cuts the budget for public safety and courts later on. They have success stories all over the place, and I will work with them to do anything I can to help raise money, and I would appreciate it, it sounds like the board's very reasonable today, that you would look into their situation, and hopefully they would at least get into the process. But the reason I did come was, I was here twice, in May and June, asking about an investigation into violations of the current election laws for the election that's coming up, November 4th. I presented all types of evidence from the county's website that proved what I was saying, that showed that two candidates didn't file timely. And I have not been interviewed. To give that investigation to the District Attorney of this county, Fran Chardo, in a year that he is running as a candidate on the team with the people he should be investigating, was wrong that day, and it's wrong now, and it looks like he wasn't going to investigate it. You haven't scheduled an election board meeting in months, the minutes weren't on there for over a year. Are elections fair in Dolphin County, or aren't they? We're headed for an election, and there are outstanding issues raised in the Republican primary. I'm a Democrat, I believe in fairness, but the victim in this was a Republican in a Republican primary who asked for a fair process. There has been a huge failure here. I expect there to be an elections board meeting next week and have this thing resolved, and have the people pay their fines and costs, and follow the same rules that everybody else follows. You can't have the District Attorney candidate on the literature and campaigning with the people he's investigating. Absolute failure.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly, anyone else for public comment? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still move?
Second. Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.